It's four o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Said we had sort of a thin crowd today, but maybe everybody didn't know we moved up a date. But thank you all for being here. David is sick today, so we will not have our students leading us in. We do have a quorum. Tammy's here. Stan Ray is on his way. So I don't think we need to change anything on the agenda tonight. Agenda as is. So that will be. Okay, we would like to recognize our students of the month and notice we don't have any children here at all, so. Dr. Todd is working on getting our children. So we'll move on down to, we'll skip the recognition of our students and our department until we hear from them. Minutes for February the 6th, does anybody have any additions, actions, changes to the minutes from last month? If not, do I have a motion that they stand approved? Okay, we have a motion that the minutes are approved for.
Tammy, I second.
Tammy can second, okay. Tammy has seconded. All in favor, make it known by raising your hand. Thank you. Start with the legal updates.
Sure. So as far as the legal updates, this is Chris. Again, the good news is that right now we don't have any pending legislation. Instead, what we're doing is we are working through the mechanics of the future relationship of the Department of Administration. And it's my understanding Dr. Todd may be able to add to this, but I'm happy to announce that myself and my office have not been involved because we have not been needed, and that's been nice. And we're available if needed, but it's also nice not to be needed for obvious reasons. But I understand that there was a meeting and there was a very large contingency department in administration with lots of contacts and other things. So, Madam Chair, I don't think Dr. Todd knew I was going to do this, but I think it'd probably be more appropriate during this part of the agenda to hear from her. We find the discussions with the Department of Administration. That'd be fun.
Yes. There were fifteen students who participated in that last week. I just, it's both separately. They have, we need to reach out to HR. And I've also that goes there. DPI and DSA. They're still learning about this school. Got a puzzle interaction.
Good. I was going to ask, is everything's been on a positive note? That's a good thing. Great. You have other?
The only other update is we're still working with and waiting on the Capitol advising arm of DPI to come up with an RFQ request for qualifications and proposals from Capitol Project. So that is still in the works and I've been working with the DPI. We're moving forward on all of those fronts. It's exciting.
Yeah. So before we go into our new business, go ahead and announce our students of the month. Hopefully they will be here at some point. We can present those tomorrow.
They are.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is Nikki. Students of the month are in elementary school, Georgia Elmore, Eli Lekowski. Little boy that might be related to us, kind of mild astio. Easton Corbin. And for middle school, Kamani Owens and Wendellin Lopez. And high school students are Daniel Mendoza and Kayden Hughes. Congratulations to them.
And I'm happy to see Wallace has joined us. Thank you. So for our Department of the Month this month?
The Department of the Month for March is going to be the Residential Life Department. We chose them because they've done an outstanding job with the activities that they have planned for the students and also sharing pictures and information about those activities on social media. And there's lots and lots of pictures that show lots and lots of children having fun and learning things. And I think it's amazing that they were able to do all that, especially at the beginning of the year when they didn't have a full staff. So we would like to honor the, all the people in the Residential Life Program.
That will include all three shifts. On that note, I would, I would just like to comment and say that I have been so pleased at the positive PR that's coming out of the school. The newspaper articles have been good. The accomplishments have been great. It's been very good to see that and for the community to see that. So thank you all for that hard work that you're doing there. New business, Director's Report. Dr. Todd?
This is me. Very. Reading. Yes, I'm. Various, there's a difference. Our area. Our high students have made it, absolutely made it to the court. Our middle, very prestigious, very good. I've been warned just last week that that same middle school qualified for the South East. And students that went to Cal last week, Alabama, had been first. And students received their rising, our freshman, most.
We've had a snow tubing trip, elementary and death plus students. Very much enjoyed that. We've had students visiting the mural downtown. That's been, been painted and has been a cause. It's the acronym for the organization and that's the mural that honors the deaf community. We did mention at our previous board meeting that we had two teachers presenting at the Exceptional Children's Conference and they made some connections there and they have their, themselves some new duties too now. And let me, without, so I'll say it correctly. For the North Carolina Division for Communication Language, Deaf Hard of Hearing, under the Council for Exceptional Children, now Taylor Hughes is the Professional Development Coordinator. And Rachel Barefoot is the Communications Director. We have sixty-three students, that's our census now, thirty-four elementary, or preschool elementary, ten middle schools, nineteen high schools. We have one middle school student who will start with us next Tuesday. One preschool student that we anticipate will start the following week, the local IEP meeting next week. I've one additional middle school student in the process and I've gotten several calls lately of interest.
Before you go on though, I would like to say that you're all downtown. All Saturday, get a chance to be down. So.
That's him.
That's wonderful. It really showcases some of our employees, past students, teacher.
I think that's it for the Director's Report.
We have a new committee that board would like to divide outreach committee on Dr. Todd's recommendation being suspended with the conditions filed because their policies are done. If we need another policy, we'll bring them back. Part of that committee is moving over now outreach and we would like to. Chair that. Katie Burns, Lisa Shubait, Andrew Phillips, Nikki White, Sandy Manning, Brian Lindsay, Janet Lawless, Hula Baker, David, and Ariel Pass.
This is from the.
Who were the two chairs? Lando and. So I have a motion on that. Jimmy.
This is Jimmy. I mentioned that that was the outreach committee starting now, today.
Is there a second on that? All in favor, raise your hand. This is another committee that I think will do wonderful things as far as getting us out and getting things on the website. By services, do a very good job already, but just add strength and power to that. The other thing we need to approve tonight, God brought this to me also, is our school improvement team. This has been kind of in limbo on hiatus for a while, so. Those that will be on that team are Sandy Manning as General Principal, Alexandra Ling, School Psychologist, Katie Burns, BPT. That was called. Landemayo is the CTEASL, Heather Masolini, EC Coordinator, Sasha Elliott, EDA. So that will be the school improvement team. They're going to get started and satisfy that need. So they'll have a motion to approve that.
This is Jenny. I so move.
Motion that we approve that team. Is there any discussion on that? I have a second.
And this is Jimmy. I do have a point for discussion.
Okay, Jenny.
I wish you would be about how many people are in that committee so far.
Six at this time.
Six.
Those were all chosen by.
And that's represented from each department?
Yes. I'll say that four of them were members of the previous team that have had a lot of meetings or been led to work through things. And then the two additional, Sandy Manning and Ally, Alexandra Ling, are replacements or employees that have moved on. And it does meet the, the recommendations meet the requirements for school improvement team. And then there is principal, psychologist, behavior, high school, special education representative, and then a TA.
And I will add that Board of Justices was set up. Really told to us that to have a school improvement team. Kind of felt like that, that needed to be, did this, kind of bring all the committees and stuff together to work. And you can find, most be able to find all their information, website. I went back to look at former. It hadn't been several years, so. Had that back up, hit that activity. So we have a second on that. Have a second.
This is Jenny. A second.
Thank you, Tammy.
Any establishment?
All in favor, is there any more discussion, any more questions, anything to ask about If not, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Everyone should have gotten a copy of Internet Safety and Ethical Abuse, including cyberbullying and harassment. As I understand, this came from Dr. McManus, actually does this kind of thing for the preschool. So we adopt this.
Yes, and as far as responsible use with the internet, what I would like to do before the board finally approves it, is just take a look at how her recommended policy interfaces with the School Boards Association sample policy. To make sure, because the policy's wonderful, just want to make sure that it integrates nicely with the overall policy manual you're going to be approving. So I think let's hold for one meeting, let's consider this a first reading, which is appropriate anyway.
Okay.
Let's let this be first reading and then I'll be ready to respond to that at the next meeting.
So anyone that hasn't had an opportunity to do this, as opposed to this for us, and let's look at it, view it. Chris said he will, he will match it with the school board policy. Vote on the next, next meeting. Tammy, did you have a question?
No, no question. I was just saying that I had had an opportunity to look at it, yes, but keep going.
And so now that brings us to our committees. Okay, did everybody get a copy of the post for the calendar next year?
He said no.
It's on the drive.
This is Tammy here. I looked for the calendar, I couldn't see it anywhere.
I didn't see it. Tammy says she didn't see it. But it is in the drive, Chris has. In that session.
I promise.
But it is in the, in the drive for all board. Does anybody have any problems and questions, any suggestions to the school calendar? Questions of Dr. Todd?
Anything come first about this, any problems with? I can get in on it.
Well, I pulled a committee together and that committee was, had a new teacher representative, a parent of the local system represented. And Kathy Williams, who has done calendars for another state agency. And we heard, I'm sorry, there was a high school teacher on that committee as well. And we heard what they liked and did not like about our previous calendar and did our best to meet those needs. And not so far. I will say that we do have the opportunity to look at some remote learning days. That is something that opens up later in March. So I would ask that the board look at this for dates tonight and with the understanding that if we do have the option for remote learning, we could possibly make some of these days remote or have that option if we have weather and whatnot. But that's just not a plan that we have the ability to finalize yet without the dates being, Dr. McManus shared that information with us.
Is that a new initiative at the schools?
It is for us because historically the three schools have kind of had one calendar together. And now that we have some more autonomy, we can look at that, if that would be appropriate for us.
Good. Any questions, discussions?
This is Tammy.
Tammy.
I do have a question. I think I read some, maybe somewhere in the, but it's possible to eleven months. Well, here, is that correct?
There's nothing been decided or brought up about eleven months yet. I will tell you that usual here, we do have a summer camp. This is one reason to adding eleven month employees, so that we can, we can have a bigger, better fall camp.
I forgot to mention, we did extend our summer enrichment camp by a week.
Dr. Todd has just said that we ended the summer enrichment camp by adding a week. So that's, you are looking at, table we're looking at as far as board is, we'd like to be able to keep the language level that we have with our students in May all the way through. So that we're not losing any, students are not missing anything as we go end of school, end of school. Really our ultimate goal. Any questions here?
This is Jimmy, I have a question. So is this kind of running parallel with our county's schedule as well? Because in the past, that's something that we've taken into consideration. Dr. Todd's saying it's close.
It's close in alignment with the county public school.
Any big changes from previous years?
Except for the feedback from staff at the committee. They mentioned specifically needing, or appreciating having a work day every four and a half weeks. They mentioned they would like options for work days at the beginning of the school year versus having so many mandated days. You know, some newer teachers may benefit from extra days while veteran teachers may not need that time. But otherwise, it pretty much mimics last year's calendar with the addition of the extra summer enrichment camp that week, last days of June and first days of July.
Any other discussion about school calendar? Okay, getting to a group of this. I have a motion.
This is Tammy. I move that we adopt the calendar as it is presented.
That we accept the school calendar as it is presented to us. Second. Any further discussion, question? All in favor, please. Hope you have a school calendar. Okay, now on to committee reports. Part with Business and Finance. Wallace?
Hi, this is Wallace. The Business and Finance Committee met on February 20th. There was really just one notable item to report to the board from that meeting. Hannah Di shared with the committee during that meeting that she learned a few days prior to that meeting in a call with the Department of Administration, that contrary to what we had been told for, I guess, a year or perhaps more, that the OSC was going to be applying for FEIN for the school, which we need in order to begin billing for Medicaid and for other things. They actually had not been taking any steps to do that and, and weren't going to be in that that responsibility was falling to us. And so Hannah quickly moved forward with submitting the FEIN application. I think that's, has been submitted. I think it was submitted within a few days after that committee meeting. If Hannah's there, maybe she can confirm that, or maybe, you know, Dr. Todd.
Hannah is here and I think she said it happened.
Okay.
At OSC, to do whatever they.
Give, to give you any idea how long that is going to take?
We, in the letter that it's, did you hear right? It did give us an EI, something to work with and so.
Good, good. You get that, Wallace?
I, I couldn't hear what Hannah was saying.
She worked with DOA and they have gotten that done, they've given them an EI. So that's completed.
Okay. So. So, um, just wanted the board to be aware that, um, you know, we, um, obviously, it would have been much preferable to know that a long time ago, so that we could have gotten that application in a long time ago. But, um, we learned that in, uh, February and quickly took steps to get the application in. So that's the main new business to report to the board from the Finance Committee.
School is glad to get that originated and getting carried on, so, yeah, that's good. Do you have anything else, Wallace?
No, nothing else to me. Just thanks to Hannah and the team for jumping on that once they learned about it.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Uh, Policy Committee?
Taking breath, but we know it will be said, and you will have a policy to, at the five noon, if you're resting on it.
This is Chris. How did I know that was coming? In defense of our law firm, we've been very busy doing background checks for a certain position. It is fairly important for the school, so I didn't want you to think that we weren't working for the school. We're putting first things first. I know you're not. I know you're not. But, uh, you're, you're doing well to point to your left. But, uh, we, now we're, we're ready to meet with, uh, Dr. Tate and with Ms. White, and to talk about a strategy for addressing those, uh, policy for thousands. So that is next on the list.
That saves me from Sandy, but that saves me from asking the question, what you've been doing? Okay, Human Resources, Dr. Tate?
HR has nothing. Uh, thing is kind of on hold at the moment while we're still in closed session.
Do know that you got a test today. That's good. Uh, Marketing, come in. Tammy?
Yeah, so we had a meeting yesterday morning, and we had a pretty good number in attendance. We discussed some different issues related to technology. That's mostly related to the website. Uh, and we talked about the brochure, developing a brochure, and that is in process. So it seems that that's going, you know, and we, uh, just, we're just continuing on technology. We've got different ideas. We did some brainstorming about what things should look like, and we just expect it to keep going and be meeting every. So we're focusing primarily on the visual, visualization board. Uh, and so we've talked with, uh, Doc. Then we'll be talking with her. There will be the best place for that, to put out ideas so people can brainstorm. People like to look at other ideas. Maybe they, we could make some changes. We can move things around. We need a board. Do that, and we'll do that. Uh, hopefully, we can, you know, we'll do that soon. But we probably need to do it, uh, I don't know if we have to do it with HR, it may, it needs to be, I'm not sure. But anyway, we'll talk about where would be the best location for that. And then, uh, the folks who are on the, on technology, age of technology, they get on the brochure, we're on the website. Basically, that's what we have done so far.
Good. And, uh, with outreach, our outreach committee getting started, advantageous, marketing and outreach. Really, and indeed. I'd say, as well. But I see all of this. Uh, Student Behavioral Health Committee. That will be a timeout. Are you here?
If you're settled, we'll continue on. You ready for me to continue on? All right, so the Student Behavioral Health Committee met today. Uh, we will be meeting monthly. Probably the first Wednesday. And really, let me give you just a summary of what we did. Actually, today was our second meeting. And kind of, we're still kind of learning each other. Uh, and talk about, you know, need to be looking at. Students need more support. Do approach. Different issues come up. How do we address those? Federal, state law. What are, we need to follow. So we've got that type of thing that we, that we need to address. And so we are looking. Needed, there are any gaps in support, especially for staff and students. And, uh, we just want to make sure that we have good mental, and that continues to grow. That's our, that's our, so we're still, you know, on that. And we've got, got some really good feedback and possibilities related to our change, changing positions that are needed to be presented to the board. So we're just still, yes, we're moving.
Thank you. And gonna take a moment here and say to the staff, a huge thank you. Because as these committees have been developing, and as I've watched them work over since July, input from the staff and the education that you are giving to Board of Trustees is just instrumental in all helping us understand their needs, their successes, and where we need to go. I think all working on the same page. And, uh, I, I've learned so much in the Student Health Committee. There was so much that I didn't know. Things have changed so much. And, uh, it's been really enlightening to know how things function here now. So I want to thank all the staff for, uh, being really, really good teachers to us. So thank you very much. Uh, next committee, Presidential Life Committee, and same thing goes to that committee. We, we are looking at, the staff handbook, Presidential Life, the student handbook. Everybody's been pitching in really, really well. Carol Wilted, um, curriculum for the Yale team many years ago, I guess, and has been, her vitally, and has been adapting that for our younger children so that we have curriculum. The littles. Love that word. Littles to the bigs. So, uh, that, that committee has really been bottom. So, uh.
Um, I have to, I don't know, just, yeah. Um, we missed our February meeting because the, the students went home early. Adverse weather was expected, so of course, um, didn't, any, uh, faculty not here that day also. So, um, I opened my, probably my, felt to the wayside. So yesterday, I was a little bit in panic, and I texted, uh, Dr. Todd and said, what progress have we made for getting these students than we like back in January? And I was thinking, oh, gosh. Loser. But then, of course, very competent co-chair that I have sent me back like, like my whole, front of my fingers in long text with all these meetings that are in the works. So I was like, so I will let her take a minute, what has happened, and she will report. While I listen.
Sure. Um, well, we're in the process, or Erin is in the process of vetting the, uh, requests that we had from the committee materials and software, um, so that we can get everything ordered. We're also researching formal professional developments for the bilingual curriculums that we're using. Case six, we sort of dumped in, and the teachers are now letting us know that they need some more formal training with that. We're looking at, uh, getting that in place for the beginning of next school year. And, um, at our scheduled meeting, uh, the school committees were ready with math and science curriculums for approval. And next, we will be looking at ASL curriculums. Eight twenty, so that will have ASL in classrooms, uh, they, you know, with teachers, with curriculum next school year.
And, um, our admissions committee.
Yeah, this is Tammy. Yeah, like, like Sandy mentioned earlier, uh, the committee is, uh, on hold now. It's going to be transferred over to the Outreach Committee, become the Outreach Committee. So actually, we have nothing to report because of that transition.
Business, I will, would like to say on that Board of Trustees, this is something I've heard he needs to do a lot of the committee meetings. If there's training that's needed and we're not getting wherever that training should be coming from. Board of Trustees needs to know that so that we can be the advocate for you to get that training. Heard about some today that I did not know was needed. So if there's training anywhere, any of your departments, please let us know so that we can be your advocate from start. So that we can get the training that's needed so that you all can feel efficient in what you're doing. Okay? Right. Uh, anything else before, go to old business. Right there. Okay, our Superintendent Director search update. I will report that we have had seven candidates to apply. Our survey has been completed, and that has qualified. We had excellent responses from the survey. Somewhere of eighty or more responses to that. Uh, a good, a good number of bad responses. And we appreciate that because it helps us, uh, we'll get the candidate. So, um, be aware that we will update it as we can on how we are proceeding with the candidates. And, uh, we appreciate your patience in the process. This is a very important spot for us, a most important position. It's not something we take lightly. By doing the survey, they have given us warm input, and so the student attendant. Do appreciate that. Hang on just a second. Okay? Believe it or not, it's got dark. I feel like we need to talk some more. Uh, and that.
We will.
Uh. That will take us to closed session. Chris?
Madam Chair, the motion would be for Sherwin two, General Stat Chief one forty-three, three eighteen, dot eleven, A one, to discuss confidential personnel matters under chapter one fifteen C and chapter one thirty-two and under subsection eight three, to receive information covered by the attorney-client privilege and under subchapter A six to discuss the initial terms of employment and qualifications for a public official.
I have a motion. Head of session. Do you have a second?
Tammy. And Tammy, second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Wait a narrow for quick.
This is Jimmy. I move to accept the recommendation for the RTL position.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Mickey? Uh, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we have a position for school counselor. Do I have a motion for that? Wallace? So move. Second?
This is Jimmy.
Uh, all in favor of, uh, hiring the gentleman for school counselor, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. I want to tell you all how proud I am that we've had this open discussion and that we, um, work well together. It's a good group of people. I tell everybody, we have an excellent board. We have people that care, and their heart's in the right place. So thank you very much. Does anybody want to make a motion that we adjourn?
Tammy.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Good night, everybody, and thank you so much. Drive safely.